You don't have your wind thing, you can't get too windy. You need the phone for this? Be all right without it?
Everybody else mic's on?
Mine is.
Justin, 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 just bring me a hand mic.
All right. I will now call to January sixteenth, Blue Springs City Council meeting order, if you would stand with me, observe on the side, I will need you to plead allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see it?
I want to welcome you in attendance with rather those that might watch later on social media. Next we have confirmation of the quorum.
Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Levise.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Erickson.
Present.
Edmondson.
Here.
Culpepper.
Present.
Mayor Ross. We have a quorum.
We will pass the mic. Okay, next we have the conservative general, unless there are any people accepting motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next I accept a motion to continue the public hearing on Houdaw Meadows rezoning and general development plan to the February fifth city council meeting, is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Also ask for a motion to continue the public hearing on Redwood zoning and planned development concept plan to be continued to the February twenty first, twenty twenty four city council meeting.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Next we have to instruct a reading of bill number five one seven six.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five one seven six, in ordinance approving amendment to the final plat for Eagles Creek of Blue Springs first plat lots one through thirty-three, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill five one seven six, in ordinance approving an amendment to the final plat for Eagles Creek of Blue Springs first plat lots one through thirty-three, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and give the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five two nine seven.
Next we have Ms. Rex, reading of bill number five one seven seven.
I will introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five one seven seven, in ordinance calling an election on the general municipal election date of April second, twenty twenty four, to amend section two one five point one two five livestock and farm animals and add section two one five point one four oh backyard hens of the city backyard hens of the Blue Springs code of ordinance is directing the city clerk to provide notice of the election.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilmember Fowler? Yours, working even?
Oh, I can speak into this one.
Okay.
Um, I did make the motion to bring this forward to be heard. I know councilmembers Edmondson and Levise have requested this. I do want to let them go ahead and do this, but I, as at the moment, I do not know that I'll be supporting it, so I'll let you guys talk to if you need to.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As Councilmember Fowler mentioned, we brought this forward largely because, just as we've been doing throughout this process, just trying to facilitate, especially this group's voice to be heard. Large amount of them are in our district, and up until this week, we've not really heard from anybody in our district that had been concerned about this backyard chicken process. The, we now know that the process, the petition initiative process was not successful officially as of a couple of weeks ago. They needed twenty eight hundred seventy-eight signatures. The election board certified twenty four hundred sixty-two, so they were four hundred sixteen signature short. If you looked at the report that was given by the election board, they had turned in four thousand three hundred and four signatures total. Seventeen hundred of those were rejected. Of those rejected, about a thousand of them, ten forty-two were because they were not registered or can be confirmed to be registered for some reason. I think that was the complaint. They've said that the form that was initially given did not have the printed name. I think our staff has addressed that, at least to us on the council. I think the thing that was significant to me was, there was a section of the report that mentioned there were four hundred seventy-one registered voters that were confirmed as registered voters in Blue Springs, but they just could not confirm that the signature that was on the form related to that registered voter. So that's not surprising to me. It's difficult to get good penmanship when you're getting those petitions. I think we got an email yesterday from one and from the group that said the election board suggested maybe that's because people sign with their finger when they register online. Regardless, we find ourselves where we are today. There are short four hundred sixteen. That still gives us twenty four hundred, not even just residents, registered voters of Blue Springs that are telling us they want this ordinance on the ballot. Now, I've been on this council for fourteen years. I cannot think of a single issue where we've ever had twenty four hundred, not even residents, registered voters telling us they wanted one thing. And I think as somebody pointed out, maybe besides Mayor Ross and your state rep days, no council member, at least up here, has ever received twenty four hundred votes in any election. It would cause maybe to, hold on, hold on. It would maybe take a combination of all three districts just to get to that many. So to ignore this level of interest and participation in our process, I think, is not appropriate, and so that's why we have brought this forward. To talk about the ordinance specifically that they proposed, it is at least consistent, if not more restrictive, than most of the cities around us. If you look at the number of chickens proposed, almost all of the cities have a limit of six, including this ordinance. The distance to the property line setbacks was ten feet. They're actually more restrictive than Liberty and then Olathe and then Mission that only require twenty-five foot to an adjacent dwelling or thirty foot to adjacent dwelling. Same restrictions on, it must require an enclosure that's more restricted than Lee Summit that does allow chickens to be out of their enclosure during daylight hours. So it's consistent with the municipalities around us. And the two things I guess I would ask us to consider as we're talking about this tonight is, I would speculate, the group does not seem to be waning any, it seems to be growing in strength, and so assuming that because they were unsuccessful this time, they're going to attempt another initiative petition, that means if we don't vote to put this on the ballot in April tonight, which would be two or three months away, this process could have taken us to August, which may not have been that bad. That's four or five months away. But depending on the timeline of another initiative petition, we're talking at least November, maybe next April, which means for those of you that have expressed a concern with the ongoing nature of this issue, we're talking ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen more months that we could be talking about this if they continue with another petition. I think, in my estimation, this group has done more than enough, and they have more than enough support for this council to put it to the people and let them have a vote. The other thing I would suggest is, maybe, as it's been suggested, they are a small vocal minority. It's ten percent. Maybe they found the only ten percent of registered voters in the whole city that care about this issue, and if so, that will be proven at the ballot box. On the flip side is, maybe they are representing majority of the registered voters of the city, and this council is standing in the way of that majority. And that's not a position I want to be in. I would hope that's not a position any of my colleagues want to be in. So I would suggest, this is my, I would say, let's not be chicken, let's let the people vote. So, let's go, let's go forward.
Again, we're not going to have any accolades out there. You can listen, but we're not going to start applauding. I want to make that very clear. And what else?
You want to start first?
Yeah.
Councilman Edmondson.
I'll go first then. First off, I want to thank staff for their effort in, in working through this process. We challenged them a while back with coming up with something. It's, it's an issue that's been brought forward to our Public Safety Commission numerous times, and so I'd like to see it finally put to bed, and we can go on and move forward with it. That's the reason why we kind of brought this back forward was to, let's, let's try to do something on our end to get it out there and let the, let the people vote. I don't look forward, and I'm sure staff doesn't, I don't mean to take words out of their mouth, and they probably wouldn't express it even if they had an opportunity to. They've taken a lot of heat in social media for maybe being obstructive or not doing something proper. This is probably, from my recollection, this is one of the first referendums we've had, somebody come forward with a petition and actually follow through with it. I mean, people have said, well, we're going to do this petition, we're going to get names, but this is the first one that's ever come forward. So our staff had to deal with that the best they could. It's a learning experience for them, just like it was a learning experience for the people that got together and put this together. So my feeling is that they, they did have enough votes. They had enough people out there that indicated they could. The signature thing is not the greatest deal in the world. That usually is what trips things up. I would remind council that we turned down a very large investment that was going to go into our community, over at the ADP, and we had less people here at those meetings than what we actually have. They were out and got those people's signatures and stuff, and yet there's an issue maybe not to go ahead and go forward, at least let the public vote on it. And once they vote on it, then it's, it's, it's done, yes or no? I mean, let's do it and move on and get the better things for Blue Springs. That's my opinion on it.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess I do want to say congratulations on the citizens' initiative petition. That is a great process. Throughout the state, we've seen many items come up on the, on our ballots because the citizens have got involved, done initiatives, petitions, got the issue on the ballot, and been voted for. Okay, I think that was the attempt here, and I always support the citizens taking that energy and doing that. That, that, it takes a lot of work. And you may continue down that path, as Councilmember Levise says. I do believe the city did the right thing by halting or pausing the process of, of an ordinance while the citizens' petition was going on. That would have been, if the council would have continued as if nothing was going on, we could have put in effect an ordinance that was going to be contradictory to what the citizens had put up, okay? And I don't, I think going two directions, different directions at the same time is the wrong thing for our city. At the end of the day, Jackson County Election Board did not certify this petition as a past petition, okay? That's, that is what it is. I think there's been a couple of attempts to go back and ask them to reassess that. I've not seen anything positive come back, allowing that yet. And I do want to talk about what I see here on the ordinance. I do not agree with the same thing that Councilmember Levise has said about the strictness of it. There are a lot of items in here which sound good, okay? I don't see objective measurements of how they would be enforceable and everything in just a general terms, and I'll give you some examples. One of the things on the nuisance, that was fairly, it was like under the definitions section, and it says, it talks about a nuisance, more than three substantiated violations of this title within a twelve-month period will automatically constitute a nuisance. And I got to say, three, three violations to count, and I think that, I know that came, that's in Overland Parks, I don't agree with it. If it's a violation, it's a violation. It shouldn't take three of them to get the attention and get enforcement going. I, I, probably, one of the biggest come apart, and I'm going to ask for staff support on this one. If you go back to C eight, which is enclosure, which is really one of the main things that we would ask, that any community is going to ask of their citizens, and that is the enclosure, the coop, the run, the tractor, whatever. C eight down there, it says enclosure guidelines. It doesn't say requirements, it doesn't say rules, it says guidelines, and that is not a word that we find in our ordinances. We, I mean, guidelines are, I guess, maybe good in design, design guidelines, but we call speed limits, speed limits for a reason. We call it, we don't call them speed guidelines, okay? We have to have a level of enforcement. And so, so I guess with the way this is written, staff, a person, their, their version of a chicken coop could be the back end of a truck, a rusted-out sixty-seven truck bed with a camper on top of it, with chicken coop painted on the side, and if they say that meets their definition of a chicken coop, it would also meet the enclosure guidelines, correct?
Uh, yeah, for the, for the most part, yes. There, there may be another section of the code that talks about not having a dismantled vehicle in the back, but if this were to be considered a chicken coop, then potentially, yes.
If it was just, if it was just the bed without the wheels?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, is that guidelines allow it to be wide open. For the visual blight, it does not meet the requirements of what I would put on the ballot. I don't see it responsible of this council to put that on the ballot. If the citizens want to put that on the ballot, that is, you have the initiative petition, you can certainly go do that. This is not something that I would put on the ballot as a city council member. If the citizens had been successful, I certainly would have wanted the public to know some of the interpretations, some of the enforcement that we find in here, because in, in my book, it did not constitute a balanced view of those wanting chickens and those who would say, okay, I understand they're going to be there, but I don't want them next to me. You should address the visual blight from, from that. And I just don't think this ordinance addresses it. Yeah, it looks a lot like other communities, but in reality, it doesn't, it doesn't meet. The, the materials that you would make it out of, I think at least someone does a great job of defining the materials to use on coops. I do not see that same language listed here. So these are the reasons that I'll be voting against this being put out to our citizens for a vote. I know that other council members have some things they would like to observe as well.
Councilmember Culpepper.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I have no problem with an ordinance for chickens. In fact, when this first came up, I don't know how many of you were out here in the audience, but I'm the one that made the motion for staff to create an ordinance. Then some of you got together and decided to take it into your own hands. I don't understand the reasoning of that since we were complying with your request. However, one of the responsibilities of a city councilman is to ensure that anything that goes on the ballot is good legislation. It's not a matter of agreeing or disagreeing with the issue. It's a matter of, not a matter, I should say, of, of personal gain, any of that sort of thing. And we would be derelict in our duty if we put something on the ballot that did not protect the rights of all citizens. Now, kudos for getting out there and getting the signatures, and it's unfortunate that it came down the way it did. However, this particular ordinance as written does not protect the rights of all citizens. As was just pointed out, and unfortunately, someone put this out on Facebook, so this is not original from me, but they said, hey, anybody have an old rusted-out camper? I'm going to put it in my backyard and label it chicken coop. Now, I'm assuming they were being facetious, I don't know, but this ordinance, as it is currently written, does not restrict that. You could do that, and there wouldn't be any way the city would have to go out and say, no, you take it down because your neighbor next door has this ten feet from their property line. That, to me, is a problem. So, as I say, I'm not against having an ordinance on the ballot, but I just feel like as a councilman, my responsibility is to make sure that what we do is responsible and good legislation. So I cannot support this the way it is currently written. And I am also very curious, I'm hearing from another councilman that you all are going to go out and do another petition. Now, if the city is going to go out and try to help you and create an ordinance, which is what we initially were trying to do, that would interfere with those efforts. So I'm just asking that question, you might keep that in mind. So I cannot support this the way it is written.
Your one else?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember.
To follow the rules of not being repetitive, I won't be repetitive, but I can't support this ordinance proposal. If I voted to put it on the ballot, I would be supporting that, so I can't do that. I too have studied many of the other ordinances and find specifics that I like and some that I don't like. I think this body can come up with permitting rules, we can come up with site design, coop materials, and animal species, and another one that sticks out to me is, we don't, there's nothing in here that addresses the animal rescue issues, and I think that needs to be done. I am, I have come a little, I guess I shouldn't say a little bit, I've come three sixty on my wishes to have staff, with the help of the council, propose an ordinance that we may vote up or down, and we may vote to put it on the ballot. That I'm a hundred percent in favor of doing. So I don't want, and I do commend you guys, you did a lot of work, and I, I didn't expect that to be that well done and all that effort, but that being said, I can't vote for this, but if, if we want to come back, this body wants to come back and go back to square one, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, your one else? Councilman Levise?
I was just going to address the concerns that have been suggested here. I have the Lee Summit ordinance right here in front of me on my iPad. It does not say enclosure requirements. It just says section five two oh two enclosures, and then has a list of things that enclosures could include, which is similar to what this ordinance does. I think the Overland Park uses the term performance standards, which is also what's in the ordinance here. So I don't, I'm not going to suggest any council member hasn't done the research, but I'm looking at it in front of me, and it's consistent with what the ordinance says. So I think to say that this is inconsistent or not as restrictive is just wrong, and I think the other thing that we're failing to suggest to, to pay attention to here is, we have twenty four hundred registered voters that are telling us this ordinance is the one they want, and yes, it's not enough to have the election board certify, but our charter allows us, in the discussion of initiative petition, that if they were to get twenty eight hundred signatures, this body could just choose to adopt the ordinance without putting it on a ballot, because the framers of our charter, many which are still around, it was only thirty years ago, foresaw that when this level of involvement from especially registered voters got there, that we may just find that persuasive, that twenty four hundred registered voters thought that this was worth doing. And so the fact that we wouldn't waste the time to have an election when we already had that many interested parties, as Councilmember Edmondson pointed out, we had one to two hundred people that were concerned about a development, and we found that persuasive. So why we would ignore twenty four hundred registered voters on this issue, just because we don't like the content, I don't think is appropriate. So that's what I think we should be paying more attention to here.
Councilmember Fowler?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. I'm not an attorney, but the word guidelines in there, there, our ordinance up at C at the very top of that page there, it does say closures likely summit, and if it would say that, that's fine, but when it gets into the objective numeric requirements of the ordinance, it puts them down as guidelines. To me, that is not objective, it's not enforceable, and I think that I, that staff would agree with that. I also, I guess, want to echo the comments about, I would be willing to, a reasonable ordinance brought by staff, I would be willing to approve, okay? And I think that that's the path we were on. I think it would have taken some debate, sure, but I would like us to see that come forward as well. However, if the citizens determine they want an initiative, I, I'm not going to stand in their way, that's, that's, that's their involvement, they want to. I definitely look over the language, and, and I guess I'd have to ask you, Councilmember Levise, what do you determine guidelines to be?
I think it's semantics. I had the same conversation you did with staff today, and to me, whether the word is there or not, I don't think it weakens the language. I think, as you had said, maybe replacing the word requirements with guidelines would make it more restrictive, and I would be okay with that. I don't have a problem with swapping out that word. If you want to make that amendment and then you would support it tonight, I'm willing to accept that amendment to our, to our bill.
I think that's one point. I think there are others that, that, right now, I'm not going to bring up.
Sure.
Need to move on.
Your one else? We have a motion, we have a second.
Your Honor.
We've had discussion. Is there a motion to amend or whatever?
So I guess I would, I would ask that, that if we vote on this, that'll be it. Are, are we, or are we not going to direct staff? And, and I support that we do do that in absence of knowing where the citizens are at, but otherwise, we've got to wait another couple of weeks for this to come back up. I just think that it would be better to, to, whatever, if the city's going to do something, that we get along and do it.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Then I will be repetitive. I absolutely agree with that, and I would like the audience to know that. There are some other things that we can talk about for a long time that are in other ordinances like Liberty and some of the others, and I don't want to get into those, but I do think we can come up with something that is palatable, that is good, that is a guideline, but all of the, the folks out here that are the chicken aficionados would like. And so that might be put in the cart before the voting horse, but I would like to see that happen.
You know, having listened to everyone, I think we got a couple of choices. One is, is we can take a vote on this, vote it up or down, or we can make an amendment to instruct staff to come back with something at a later date.
Uh, I, my understanding was that we could not do that.
Councilmembers, I believe my recommendation would be not to, if you're going to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, I would do that by motion. I believe you could do that during discussion, make that motion, if you were to pass it, pass that motion, then you could proceed with, I believe, the roll call ordinance itself. I don't believe you'd amend the ordinance.
Okay.
To direct staff to.
Okay, so this is legal advice, is, is, is we can, but we're in the middle of the discussion right now. So I think I need to know the procedure and how we do, do we go, do we reject this, pass this, reject it, and if it's rejected, then ask staff to work on a motion?
You could certainly do that as well, or if you wanted to proceed with a motion right now, directing staff, and then, even though it seemed likely what the outcome of the roll call vote is on the ordinance itself, I think it's still okay to have the motion.
So make a motion in the middle of discussion of another motion?
That, that, that seems like we should, we should vote this up or down.
I think we just need to go ahead and take a vote on this, and then if it fails, then we can instruct staff to work on an ordinance and come back for consideration at some point. Okay?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll sit down here quiet. I've just got to ask the question, what's the chance of it even of the staff doing an ordinance when we, we've known previously that we've tried to do an ordinance, we did exactly what they were wanting us to do? exactly what they were wanting us to do, and they, they stated, we are prepared to adhere to any regulations the city requires of us if they're willing to compromise. We don't even know what kind of ordinance we were coming back with, and yet they went to do a petition. So I don't, I don't quite understand the chance of doing the, another ordinance. Are, are we going to work together, or are we not going to work together? Obviously, it seemed like we tried to come back with something, and, and it seemed like we decided we'd do a petition instead, and I never understood that.
Councilmember Levesey.
I'll, I'll address Councilmember Kayler's concerns here. My, my recollection of the situation was that the public comments of this council were not supportive of bringing back an ordinance, so I'm glad to hear tonight, there is so much...
No, no, no.
No, no, no. No, no. I, I recall the public comments being that Councilmember Kayler, you did not support a chicken ordinance of any kind until very recently, as is other council members up here. So I believe, based on my reading of the situation, that's why the residents moved forward with the petition, was because there was not a consensus to move forward with any type of chicken ordinance, and now there is. So I'm glad to hear some consensus there now.
Well, there is guarantee that even if staff comes back with an ordinance that is going to pass.
Your Honor.
Is for consideration.
Right.
If I may, I made a motion that we asked staff to come up with an ordinance, and there was only one no vote, so I think it's unfair to say the council wasn't supportive of staff investigating an ordinance. I think at this point, we need to go ahead...
You made a motion to ask staff stop making an ordinance.
We need to go ahead and, and vote on this, so that we can move forward.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember Kayler.
I, my colleague definitely don't remember, I think he needs to go back and look. The, there was a motion made to go look, have staff look into all the cities, just like they were asking, to see what kind of ordinance was coming back, and that's what the motion was, it passed six to one, and that means there was, it passed with the greatest percentage, and I just, I, I disagree with you, Councilman. We, we did agree to have staff go do something.
Okay, well, we're going to get ready.
I, I, just real quick, Your Honor, I would also say that I recall us telling staff to do it, I told, we did recall telling staff to pause once the citizens began a petition process, and I would call what Councilmember Levesey's talking about is equivalent to mind-reading, and I don't know how anybody can read my mind like that, because I, I, until I see the, the product in front of me, I don't know which way I'm going to vote on it. I'm going to take that information and review it at that time. It's just, it's purely guessing, speculation, if you think you know how this council's going to do. We can't even predict how each other's going to do.
That being said, we're going to take a vote.
You're going to do a vote?
We're going to roll call. There was a motion to approve, there was a second, we've had a lengthy discussion, now we're going to vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fowler?
No.
Councilmember Erickson?
No.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilmember Culpepper?
No.
Councilmember Kayler?
No.
Councilmember Levesey?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
No.
Motion fails with a vote of five to two.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember Culpepper.
All right, I would like to make a motion, if I may. And I'm going to give some, some dates here, because on September fifth, I made a motion to have staff research and create an ordinance for, for the council to review. It was a six-to-one vote. On November sixth, we directed staff to discontinue researching because there was a petition, and we wanted to see what was happening on the petition. The petition had an ordinance, who knows what it was going to look like compared to what the city staff may have brought forward to us. So at this point, since the petition failed, I am moving to direct the city administrator to resume, resume research and drafting of a bill for council consideration, amending the code relating to backyard chickens, I'm sorry, backyard hens, by the first council meeting in March.
I'd like to second that.
Here we have a motion and a second, is there a discussion before we take a vote on it? See you tonight, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the visitor's section. Only, did I have one? Jennifer? Three minutes.
I'm not sure if it's a good thing or bad thing that we're on a first-name basis now. I wasn't sure what was going to be said tonight, and I actually had no speech prepared. Sorry. On behalf of the citizens that I represent, which is quite a lot of people that I never intended to represent, I want to thank you all for your time tonight, especially Councilmember Levesey and Edmondson, for speaking up for our petition, because at the end of the day, we did get fifty-five more signatures than were required. To the others who have voted to instruct staff to go ahead and continue with creating an ordinance, we appreciate that as well. Thank you for giving us a timeline this time, because that is one thing that it was lacking last time, there was no timeline of when staff was supposed to come back. So I think that we can all sit back and wait for the first meeting in March to see what you have to say, and we appreciate you.
Your Honor, if I might?
Go ahead.
I want you to know, I want you all to know, this has not been an easy process for anybody up here either. I know more about chickens and ducks than I ever really wanted to know. I can tell you how much they poop and how often they poop. I can tell you different breeds of ducks are good and different breeds of ducks are not good. So this is, this is not something we have just jumped into. This is something we have taken under serious consideration. We've done our homework, and we just want the best that is for everyone. So again, I applaud you for all of your efforts. Not many people would have gone through that.
Thank you very, very much. It was grueling most of the time.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm being repetitive again. They like to talk about the six-to-one vote, and I said very openly that I've come three-sixty on this, and I hope you appreciate that.
I do.
Because I have studied it well, I do have a, a different background than some folks do. I would also like to say, unless I'm incorrect, if this comes back at the first meeting in March, there's a very high likelihood that you don't, April the fourth or the second, excuse me, will not occur as far as a ballot initiative. The motion was not to put it on the ballot, it was to come back with an ordinance for up or down here, is that not correct? So in other words, what I'm saying is, you may see something happen a month earlier than you thought you might, and it will be, if it happens, it will be less expensive to the city.
I don't think any...
You won't, you, you won't come back in March and put it on the ballot?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what, no. All I'm saying is, to this group, if we pass that, then, then the April ballot is, is gone, and they're a month ahead, and it sounds like there's a lot more appetite for this now than there was before.
Well, again, staff will come back with a proposed ordinance, and this council will take it under consideration, and you'll make your decision at that time whether you approve it or not. Very simple.
Correct. And again, we thank you all very much. The March timeline is actually, for me, quite exciting, do you guys agree? I think we're all really happy with it. Have a good night.
Okay, that brings us to Topstapunda, and tonight I have two. We just celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, which was a drum major for social justice and equality in one of my heroes. My first quote comes from him, and I quote, "I have decided to stick with love, hate is too great a burden to bear," end quote. The next one comes from Philip Zombardo, and I quote, "Most of us hide behind ego testicle biases that generate the illusion that we are special. These self-serving protective shields allows to believe that each of us is above average on any test of self-integrity. Too often, we look to the stars through the thick lens of personal invulnerability, when we should also look down to the slippery slope beneath our feet," end quote. Next, we'll go to our city attorney for, no, we're going to go to the city clerk. I'm letting the city attorney slide since he's kind of new at this right now, so we're going to go to the city clerk, for motions for so and so move.
Thank you, Mayor. A motion is in order for the council to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of Paragraph Twenty-One Revised Statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel, including networks, including network security, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stands adjourned at the completion of such session.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Welcome.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levesey?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're going to go into executive session.